Just wanted to put that happy thought in your head.
I would say it's better than the team that wears both socks.
It is, by quite a lot.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of May 17th, 2023, being held in a town hall hearing room, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. This is to formally advise, and as required by Masters of General Law, Chapter 30A, Subpass 1825, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, the Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting at date and time noted on the notice of meeting. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via alternative public access provided on a notice meeting available on the Town of Yarmouth website. I will start by taking a roll call of the members. Do you slow back?
Will Rubenstein, present.
Susan Britta? Jim Saven, present. Do I have to say the others? I know they're not here.
No, I think that's fine.
Having a call, we'll start our meeting. Kathy, you're going to talk about the accessory apartment bylaw amendments, kind of continue the discussion.
Sure. I think, as we all know, we are on the June 6th Board of Selectment Agenda, and I think we are hoping to give them an update on where we stand with all the great work that's been done on the accessory apartment amendments, and also to see if we can't get some input from them on the amendment to date. This memo, I did run it by Joanne, so there's some edits in here that are included for her. I think some of the things that are really being highlighted is the requirements for zoning, a special permit versus by right. How does the board feel about that, the Board of Selectmen? You know, lot size and dimensional restrictions were another thing, and then parking spaces. So this just gives this memo here, the draft memo, that just gives them a brief overview of what's going on, highlights the fact that we have the three listening sessions that are going to be coming up. Send people, not just the Board of Selectmen, but other people to the website where we have all of that great information, the draft, the maps, the frequently asked questions. And then also, all of that information is attached here because I want it in the packet for the Board of Selectmen, so hopefully more people from the public will see that. So I don't think, I don't think we necessarily need to go... Oh, and I did have a flyer, and I have done some initial publications and notifications to, basically to the neighborhood groups, because I know that they were concerned you might want to meet ahead of time, and it might take a little while for them to do that. It's been on a press release, social media, it's not been on the Town website, and I have started putting up these flyers places. I'm going to wait to get a little bit closer to the actual dates before I do my typical push on publicity and send it out to the schools and a bunch of other direct emails that I have from people. Anyone who's interested from the Visioning Project, people who might be interested in this type of thing.
Did you say this is not on the Town website yet, or is on the Town website?
All this information is on the Town website.
On the Town, okay, thank you.
So it's just, and then also in this, I gave a very brief, and this is on the landing page of the Town website, a brief summary of the amendments that are in the bylaw. And then, for those who want to take a deep dive, we'll include the entire draft for people, and then also all of the frequently asked questions. People might find that better understanding, which includes all the definitions. It also includes a table, so people can get an idea of how many smaller sized lots that we have, and that was the information that was used by the Planning Board in developing some of the criteria, and then the map that we have here. So that, right now, is kind of like the draft packet for the Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't know if anyone had any comments on that. We also have a draft PowerPoint presentation of the listening session that we can go through, but I didn't know if anyone had any comments on this. I also don't know how long we're going to be given at the Board of Selectmen, time-wise, whether we should, maybe, this might be something you guys can comment on later, whether we should be giving the PowerPoint presentation also, or how we give it to the Board of Selectmen. But just didn't know if anyone had any comments on the memo and/or the information that's included.
The presentation will be dictated by how the Selectmen want it. If they want us to give the PowerPoint, then...
They don't tell you.
They don't tell you how they want it?
The only thing you'd ever know is like how much time they gave you on the agenda. So if you had 15 minutes, I probably don't know whether they really wanted something too involved. But if they gave you half an hour, yeah, you know, they might want to have a little bit more detail. So maybe this information is included in it, and then we can just say, "And I'm going to run through this PowerPoint tomorrow night." So these are some of the questions that we're going to be asking the public. It would also be good to hear your input on these questions as well.
Kathy, I have just one comment on that page, and I can't find it now, but the page you talked about, this was in the listening session packet. Are we going to have home offices, and it says it had the term "very limited"?
Yep.
It was very, what is, what does that mean, "very limited"? What is limited?
Yep.
I forget, I was just reading it.
Slide number nine.
Slide nine?
Slide number nine.
So there's no page numbers because it's by slide, so you'll see slide nine under Appearance. It's the final bullet point.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I have here in the presentation is I would give some examples, examples of home occupations, obviously the issues of no employees, you can't have any customers coming to your house, you can't have any signs advertising it, and everything needs to be within your dwelling unit. Can't be something that's being done outside.
Isn't that current?
This is the current bylaw right now. And then some examples I could give is like, you know, whether you're in office, some office work, internet or phone sales, like things like sewing, quilting, or crafting.
But this amendment, I guess, is not adding additional limitations. In other words, it's just keeping the very, you're correct.
It's keeping what's allowed in 416 to be allowed in the accessory apartment.
I thought it was adding additional limitations because it said "very limited", so I thought, well, maybe we were adding, maybe we were adding, I don't know whether...
You didn't say limited home occupations per section, is it, 401/6?
I just say, home office, home occupation, per section, 416, I just dropped the term "very limited", because in that way we're not confusing people. I thought it meant we were adding additional, okay.
Everybody okay with that? Just like afterwards, "very limited"? Okay.
So do you want to go through the PowerPoint?
Sure, I mean, it's good to give an idea of what you're dealing with and give you a practice run.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I just quickly comment on the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen meeting first?
Absolutely.
Before we go through that? I do think that in the interest of trying to give as much information to the public as many possible times as we can, in addition to the three listening sessions that we're going to hold, plus the public hearing that's happening later this summer, I think it would be wise to present this at the Selectmen, at the Select Board. I just, I don't see a downside, I mean, except for what may be an already packed agenda, which of course, I'm not privy to. But I would hope that Madam Chair and Kathy would be given the chance to present this, because I do think it may spark some things beyond just what's on the written page, because I think we all know, everybody takes things in differently and absorbs things in differently, and there's huge merit to having all this in writing, as well as having it in the packets. But having that extra exposure, Mr. Chairman, in public at the actual Select Board meeting, which is generally better attended than these meetings, could very well help the general public as we move forward. Thank you.
I would happily agree with what Will says, you know. If anybody in town is paying attention to anything, they watch Selectmen meetings before they watch almost anything else. So if we do have the opportunity, then I think what I'm hearing from members of the board is that more is better, the more exposure, the better, so.
We can even send in the memo with the attachments and then even include the PowerPoint, and then just give the PowerPoint at the meeting.
That's basically what I'm saying, and again, unless there's some tremendous pushback because there's a bunch of alcohol licensing hearings and other committees have to make presentations that would eat up a lot of their time, which I certainly respect, otherwise, I would say, "Let's just do it." I agree. Please. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
You only have 15 minutes. It's important to have it anyway. So, yeah, if you have downtime, you don't have any more information out of the list. If you only have 15 minutes, at least you can hope they've gone through this, and then you can use the 15 minutes to go back to the memo and highlight the areas that still need some improvement, and that is, it got everything.
Now, I'd say that as an experienced individual attending a couple of Selectmen meetings in my life, that 15-minute window is not something that's necessarily followed quite strictly. It's the preferred timeframe.
Call seeing a timer.
No, there isn't.
Sometimes maybe that could benefit the Select Board. Who knows?
So you want to go ahead and go through the PowerPoint? And I don't see any hands up over there, so we'll go there.
Right.
I think we're going to basically run the listening sessions in a very similar fashion that we did the first listening session. Joanne will probably give a brief introduction, probably introduce you guys and any Town staff. I think there might be members also of the Community Housing Committee who will be present as well, and kind of just introduce everyone. I did do a small draft agenda, so people can kind of get a general idea of what we're going to be talking about. We're going to give a brief background of the zoning. Like, a lot of people may not know that we do have an accessory apartment bylaw right now, and kind of how did we get to where we are. And then we're going to look at reviewing a bunch of different draft amendments and provisions related to a bunch of different topics and seek public input after each provision, and also a general overview at the end if people want to provide additional comment at the end.
Kathy, the only thing at the end, I think it's, the introduce this, I think we should say to the public, "This outline actually follows the outline of the draft." Everything we have in the intent and purpose, ownership, like that, all this information is included in the draft, so anything you're reading, there's going to be in the draft also. So there's no confusion about seeing it or seeing it in place and not seeing it. This tracks the draft very nicely, so.
May I ask just a clarifying question about the presentation itself? So what I read here is, "Public input after each provision and at the end." So does that mean when you get to purpose and intent, number five, does that mean after every slide, you're going to stop? And then seek public input?
I would.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to make sure, because I just wanted us to think about how that format's going to play out, and so I get it, I just wanted to speak it because I wasn't sure based on what was written.
And if you'll notice in the PowerPoint, when it's an actual provision, you'll see that it says "proposed draft amendments" right there.
Ah, I see. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Because we're not just, we're not just going through the amendments, but we're going to educate people a little bit. There's some definitions they're going to need, we're going to look at some mapping, and that type of thing to get people kind of up to speed.
And it does let people chew on it in real time, so we don't move on to the next slide until everybody's had a chance to comment in real time.
I also think it's important to have all the comments at the end, because it's kind of cohesive. All the provisions kind of play into each other as a whole, as to what the amendments incorporate.
Is it expected that Joanne will summarize some of these things at the end of the listening session? When you say, you know, summarize at the end, is that going to be Joanne? Is it, is it, is it, is it, this is what I heard, that kind of comment? Or when you say comments at the end, that you expect?
Oh, no, no, I mean from the public.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, public comments from the end. I think you guys are just listening. I don't think we should try to summarize anything at the end. This is all about what you guys are taking in.
So, again, I'm sorry, I just, I just want to make sure I understand it. So do you mean, so after, sorry, so after slide five is presented, purpose and intent, are you going to stop and ask the public for comment?
I would.
Okay, but then you said you're also going to do it at the end.
I think so, because I think people...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were doing both, because I didn't want it to seem like it was one or the other, because I do agree it should be both.
That's why I said after each provision and at the end.
Okay, I just wanted to...
I think people may, once they hear the holistic, all the provisions, they may feel differently than when they see them, start seeing them piece meal.
Thank you, thanks for the clarifying.
So do you want to put a little bullet there that says "questions" or something like that? On your slide, your proposed purpose and intent, so after like, no significant impact, and then the next bullet would be, you're going to talk, anybody, all right, you got any questions? We're just going to leave that blank and then say, yeah.
I think I would just state at the end that, you know, does anybody have any comments? Joanne did a good job of, once I was done, I looked at her, and then she would say, "Does anyone from the public have any comments on these particular provisions at this time?" Understanding you'll have a time, a chance at the end also to comment, and kind of see where people feel. And then we're going to go through the next step. So what happens after we collect all this information, and where are we going from there? So obviously, we want to start with what is an accessory apartment, because not everyone may understand what that is.
And thank you for the graphics, because I do think if people can understand what's red is the Adu, what's not, is not.
Good point. So it's essentially the second smallest housing unit that has its own sleeping, cooking, and bathroom facilities, but it's located on the same lot as a single-family home. And this is, gives some examples of how, where it can be located within the existing home, or it can be, and that's what's showing you, whether it's the upper floor, down in the basement, over a garage, or converting your garage, or it can be, it can be attached to your home through an addition of some type, or it can be detached. It can be separate from your home, and it's a separate structure on your property. So where do we kind of stand? As I mentioned before, we do have an accessory apartment bylaw right now, but it's very limited. It's only limited to family-related, which is related by blood, marriage, or law, or an affordable accessory apartment by special permit. And the affordable is a capital, it's a capital A, because it requires the deed restrictions. It's restricted on the rents that can be charged, and it also requires income-eligible tenants to occupy that. We did try to make some amendments in 2019 to kind of expand that definition of family-related, to include caregiving and that type of thing, and also to elusive the affordable restrictions, to not require all of the deed restrictions, but still have some limitation on the maximum rent that could be charged.
Excuse me, Kathy, if you don't, can I, are we allowed to?
Sure.
Do you think it makes sense, and maybe you did it later, so I apologize if you did, just to set the context even further, to mention, under the, after the, mentioning family-related or affordable, what the current numbers are?
Oh, sure.
You know, just to get, because I think it sets the context, whether or not that's helpful down the road, I do think it just says, "This is where the playing field is", and I think including the number of each one would be beneficial. Thank you.
Yeah, and we have about 52 family-related, some of them come on and some of them come off. Sometimes people get a special permit but don't actually construct it. And we have about three affordable accessory apartments, but it appears that none of them have the actual deed restrictions on them. So in 2022, we had a citizen petition to create an accessory dwelling unit, which is another name for an accessory apartment bylaw, and it really kind of highlighted the desire to see some changes in our bylaw. Ultimately, the petition was withdrawn to allow the Planning Board to kind of work to develop the amendments using consensus, public participation, and trying to compromise on some of the provisions. Since November of last year, the Planning Board has been conducting numerous public meetings, including the initial listening session in December, and then now these three listening sessions in June. The goal is to have the amendments for the 2023 Fall Special Town Meeting.
I think one other opportunity, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm so used to saying "madam", I almost called you. Okay, cool. Is, I understand it's numerous public meetings, I think it would actually help if we put a number, because I, the reason I asked Kathy, and I know, and I can actually help you some of the research, if we could say nearly two dozen, nearly whatever the number, I think a number has a little more power than numerous, because I do, again, as my earlier comment about the current inventory, I just think, I think it really helps just sharpen the details and the understanding, hopefully for folks, that while it's true that we, everything we're saying here is true, that we've had numerous meetings, I feel like if I sat in this room in a few weeks and heard that this is now the 25th meeting that this group has had since November, I think that means something, rather than the word numerous. Thank you.
I like the idea. The only thing is, I don't want to confuse people, because we've had meetings, we've had public meetings dedicated strictly to the Adu. However, the Adu has been on our agenda almost every single week.
I would count every time it's on the agenda.
Yeah, I would say that. It's been on the Planning Board agenda every single...
Yeah, so I think we're in agreement. The number I just think has power, but I agree.
If they can come to any public meeting, and it's been on the agenda every time, so I would say that whatever, how many listening sessions, as well as on the agenda...
Absolutely.
Every meeting since December 1st, or whatever.
Yeah, I think January 18th, when we had our double public hearings, was the only meeting that we really haven't discussed it.
Another thing I might add to that would be that we are currently on draft 12, 13?
Excellent.
12 or 13?
Yes.
We'll point out the fact that we've, you know, made a number of edits and changes through the process.
I mean, certainly in that bullet where it says "public participation and compromise", you know, there's an opportunity to say, "You're looking at draft number blank", I mean, again, with your expertise to make it sound better than what I just said.
What is our draft, 12? Are we at 12, 13?
Yep.
12. Draft number many.
So now we're starting to get into the actual provisions that are included in the draft amendment, and kind of going through each one and then under each page, trying to get an idea of what the public feels. So what's the purpose and intent? Why are we actually doing this? We want to increase the number of smaller year-round rental units available in Yarmouth for everyone, so not have any restrictions on who can use these units. We really need that because we need to sustain our workforce and prevent local residents from being displaced and having to move off Kate because they can't find a place to live. We want people to be able to age in place, we want that caregiving ability. We also want to continue to allow family members to have their own separate spaces, but living close to family members. All of this helps to support a strong, stable, and diverse year-round community, which is what we're looking for. We also have a lot of existing housing stock that is somewhat underutilized. Currently, the average people per home is 2.2, so it's relatively low. So we have a lot of housing stock that maybe we can utilize to address some of our issues. We also want to be sure that we're protecting the character and appearance of our single-family residential neighborhoods. Everyone here lives in a single-family residential neighborhood, and we want to maintain the quality of our neighborhoods. We also don't want to do anything that's going to have a significant impact to our environmental resources, which we're actively working on improving.
Kathy, can I just take a comment? The fifth bullet, well, the protecting the character and appearance. At one point, and I, you know, this, because I brought it up, I thought we were going to combine one and five, and say, "Increase the number of smaller year-round rental units available", while at the same time protecting the character. And so, and at one point, we did do that, and somehow it got back to now we're being a separate bullet. I remember early on, I think you did combine it into one, because it was almost identical to the current...
No, it actually right now is combined.
It is correct.
So, "The range of housing choices available to residents for increasing the number of smaller dwelling units available in Yarmouth for year-round rental, while protecting the character and appearance..." Do you want to?
Could we, so could we combine it again? And that way, it tracks more with the current...
So before you do that, it works, but this also allows us to break those two subjects out to separate issues. Protecting the character and appearance of our single-family residential neighborhoods is a separate concern, if you will, from what I've heard recently, than increasing the number of units. So increasing the number of units is a different part of the... I see what it says, "while protecting the character", I mean, that worked, that flows.
Do you want to put it second then, maybe?
You could do, I just like the idea that it is a... It should be a separate bullet to me, because that's an issue that we've heard a lot of discussion about, is the character of our neighborhoods.
But when it became consecutively, you would still get the same benefit.
Yeah. Not really.
Okay.
At least in my mind, because the whole issue of Adu's is taking residential, you know, the potential for multifamily units. So I see the two of them, there's always the issue of protecting our neighborhoods, because you have, I don't know, solar panel issues, you have water issues, but this particular issue is tied directly to the Adu's. And early on, the one public meeting, early on, that was a driving consideration, that only the single-family residential units, that people were actually quote paying the price for this. Not towns involved, you know, multifamily duplexes, none of those people involved, it was just the single, and therefore, it impacted the single-family residential neighborhoods. So they were trying to get an Adu while, while at the same time protecting the neighborhood. So I think the two of them are linked.
I would agree. I like the, you need to have them both together. You can't have them separately. You can't, you need them both.
You cannot do an Adu without impacting the neighborhood.
Right, but the purpose of intent is to increase the number of small residential units available in the Town of Yarmouth.
Well, period, no.
Period. Also, a separate bullet is to protect the character and appearance of our single-family residential neighborhood. They're two, I mean...
They're literally two different con, they're literally two different concepts.
But I think people are going to have discussions, if we put it all together, I guarantee you, there will be a single, not a single person will talk about the number of smaller units. They're going to talk about the character of the neighborhood. And I think if they break it out, it, it bold faces it to them, "Hey, this is one of the things, so if you want to talk about it, here it is right now, is a bullet for you." They can blend it in, I don't care. I mean, but I just think, if you want to hear the masses, then break it out and let them pick it right out of there, and not have it blended in.
But I think the conversation, the whole conversation on Adu's is trying to know a public good, which is Adu's, you know, trying to provide a different, while at the same time, maintaining, because remember what you're doing with an Adu, that's just sort of changing the DNA of the neighborhood. So it's, it kind of works about the other. If you are going to do Adu's, you are de facto changing the resident, and so we want to make sure that as we work our way through this, and we do get some Adu relief or new Adu, we are working to maintain the character of the neighborhood.
And we're also trying to sustain our workforce, support a strong and stable diverse... So I mean, I think we're all saying that we agree that these are, this is the purpose and intent. I think what Jim and I are trying to advocate for is, the more you break it out, the easier it is for everybody to absorb the fact that these are all under the category of purpose and intent, and if we combine them together, then some of them may lose their power. You're saying the opposite, so we're just going to have to not agree on that, and that's okay.
Weeks ago, this was combined.
Well, it's combined in the bylaw.
It is, it's almost identical to the current first sentence in the current bylaw. And weeks ago, we talked about this. I specifically, because this was the residential neighborhood through the last bullet, I specifically said, "I think it should be at the top, along with, make it a complex sentence." And the board said, "Sure, let's do it." And then, in the various iterations, somehow it got back into a separate bullet. So I just want to, if you want to go back and look at the minutes, at one point, those two concepts were combined in one bullet.
I don't disagree with you, I'm not interested in looking at the minutes. I would just advocate as a compromise to take bullet five and make it bullet two. If you would like to make bullet five into bullet one, please go right ahead.
I think bullet five should be part of bullet five.
Go right ahead.
While at the same time, if it, I mean, it's just...
Okay, so let me move this on.
What are you going to talk about?
Let me move this on.
We'll see.
So, I'm with Will. If you want to blend it in, go right ahead. I don't think it's right, I think we should keep it out so that it is clearly in the minds of people that says, "Hey, character and appearance is something that this board has considered", but if you want to blend it in, blend it in.
I do think, though, overall, it's a really good purpose and intent, and I would hope that when we get to our listening sessions, regardless of where the bullet points are, that I don't, I think we have literally given everyone the right kind of platform to then have the kind of detailed conversations that we're going to have.
Okay, any more questions on purpose and intent? So you're going to blend it in?
I'm going to blend it in.
Okay, blend it in. Ownership and rentals, the next bullet.
Yep. I think one of the important things that has been included is that we're making the property, this must be a property owner's primary residence. So this is a case where we want the owners to be present, we want them to be managing their properties and managing their tenants. We also want to give some flexibility in allowing the owner, that maybe they want to occupy the smaller accessory apartment because they have a smaller family unit, but we also give them the option to continue to be in the primary structure. We want to be sure that apartments are not for sale, and they shall not be placed into condominium form of ownership. We're not trying to create duplexes here. We also want to be sure that the properties are leased for a minimum of 12 consecutive months, with no seasonal short-term rentals or subletting or room rentals. So if you are also the owner-occupied unit, shall not be rented in any manner. So you basically get one bite at the residential apple, so to speak. You can either have an accessory apartment and rent that, or you can not have an accessory apartment and Airbnb your primary residence. Those are your options, but we don't want people doing both of those. It's a little bit too much of a stress on the neighborhood.
No, 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 we don't, not, it's not that we don't want them to, they cannot.
They cannot, yes.
I don't want to say they don't want to, because then they're like, "Well, maybe they do."
But the reason, but the provision is...
They cannot.
The reason that provision is in there is because we do not want them to, so now we have prevented them from doing so, yeah.
Just ask a quick point of clarification. In the third bullet, when I read "Apartments are not for sale", it just doesn't compute in my brain, English-wise. I think it should be "Apartments are not eligible for sale", if that is indeed legally true, which I believe it is.
It's true.
So I would just like to clarify that just one extra step, please. Thank you. And I do feel like, what I'm really happy about, about how you've done this, Kathy, is, and the fact that you're going to pause after each one, recognizing that these all fit together, and we'll have more comments at the end. I do think that we are sort of methodically going to help people in their minds work through their own questions, because this is a big one. The stuff on here is big, you know, notwithstanding all the other stuff that is also big.
Can you think of something they might ask that we haven't included so far?
I mean, I, you know, I'm glad you asked that, Susan, because I was thinking to myself, "Oh, okay." I mean, it feels like when you come through the end of that, it's pretty clear.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing I can think of is, and it hasn't come up on it well, and you asked, I asked about it last time, is the issue of corporations. And you're right on Mark, too, and sort of...
Yeah.
That's the only thing I can think of, because that did come up early on, way back, and it, and we've got an answer for it, so.
Yeah. I think if you're the corporate, the head of the corporation, and this is your primary residence, and just happens to be under your corporate housing or something, I'm sure Mark can figure that out. All of that documentation is on the Secretary of State website.
Okay, so we have an answer for that, yeah. Okay, so we have an answer for that, yeah.
And then, and then the last big thing is that the renters, who you're renting to and the rates that are being charged are completely determined by the property owner. There's no more restrictions or limitations on that. So just some general requirements that didn't necessarily fit in anywhere else. We want to be sure that this is a complete and separate housekeeping unit. We actually have some requirements with regard to what needs to be included in the kitchen, it needs to have a sink, a stove, and a minimum of ten cubic foot freezer refrigerator, so that it's a full, complete housekeeping unit. You can only have one accessory apartment per lot. You're only eligible for it if you have a single-family property, meaning you only have a single-family home on your property right now. So if you already have a duplex, you're not eligible, if they're multifamily, you're not eligible. You also need to have more than ten thousand square foot of a lot size. It's also only limited to the residential zoning districts, and we'll take a look at these districts in a minute. The B1, B2 business district, and the medical overlay district. We might want to talk about the medical overlay district, I'm not sure it's allowed now in the medical overlay district, I'm not sure why. It's a tiny little sliver of a district next to Cape Cod Hospital. And I can't even imagine, you know, most of the things in the medical overlay district are still bigger not to allow a little accessory apartment into a single-family home. So when I was writing this out, I'm like, why is it in the medical overlay district? So just as an aside, that's something that, it seems, it seemed odd to me that it was included.
Is that entirely a member, that medical overlay?
Yes, yes. It's a sliver, it's not very big at all, it's a little section of Bayview on the east side, but just something.
Kathy, before you go any farther, you made a really good clarification that I think there's room to add on here. No, I didn't actually, I kind of knew what a housekeeping unit was, but I think since we have the room on the slide, I think it would just benefit the public, as well as everybody, to just, maybe in parentheses. Unless it's in the definition.
It is, but we can say, you know.
I just think, again, I think a lot of people, that might just fly right over their head, and that isn't intentional on your part, I know. And I know you said it verbally, but again, I think some people will cling on to what's in writing. Maybe just a sentence that just further defines.
Complete and separate units, maybe each unit needs to be a standalone.
Sleeping bathrooms and kitchens.
Again, I just think, again, it just makes everybody, again, because we're stopping at the end of every slide, right. I'm just trying to anticipate.
You know when someone stood up and said, what's the housekeeping unit?
Hey, can you give me the housekeeping unit again, and then you don't have to.
Right here on the paper.
Because it's right there.
So you try to get your children to clean.
Oh, I like it. My grandchildren, who knows?
So, I would point out that the medical overlay district also abuts the highest park civic association. Just an FYI.
Way of information.
Way of information.
There are some single-family, but they're mostly like doctors, that they've been converted to doctors' offices that are in the medical overlay district.
Yeah, there's some houses that abut up the old Tremway bogs.
Yep. I just bring it up because it just seemed odd to me, why that was, that was allowed. The other thing is that properties that are already are deed restricted affordable, meaning you have that affordability requirement deed restriction at the registry, and also lots and properties that were developed through a comprehensive permit, or which is known as a chapter forty B, where you're already given some reduction in lot sizes and density as part of that permitting process.
Kathy, I think it would help if you put that on here, where it said forty B, because I do feel like a lot of people know what that is.
Know what forty B is.
But if you, if you can just highlight it again here, so that people can leave here saying, okay, no forty B. Thank you.
Comprehensive permit, lots, parentheses, forty.
Sure, yep, easy, easy peasy. And then always, and, and anything, zoning is just one component that we, with regard to development, and anybody would need to adhere to all the federal, state, local codes and regulations. I think the two big ones are going to be the building code and health codes that are going to be, need to be that. And at the end, you're going to need a certificate of occupancy for your unit once it's constructed.
Kathy, can we go back to the medical overlay district?
We can talk about it some more, I just thought we were right.
Let's take up the most we've ever spoken about this thing, because it's very exciting.
It might be useless, because I, I'm not even sure that there are actually, there are a lot of small lots, and they may all be under ten thousand square feet over there. So we might not even, I mean, we're making it something that it can't be done anyway. So maybe just take a quick peek to see if there's, would it affect anything? I don't think it does. Because like you said, most of it's medical office space, et cetera. There's Rosario Road and those little side streets, but I think those are all under ten thousand square foot lots.
The medical overlay district was created with a column and a footnote. It's not like our V C O D overlay district or a Motel Hotel overlay district, which has a lot of details and provisions included in a whole separate section. Needless to say, I don't think anything's ever been developed under it. But I can certainly take a look and see, and see how that, I could show you the district in more detail, too. I'm just saying, this isn't something we have to deal with, you know, as far as the listening session, but maybe this is something we talk about.
And if it is, if it's under ten thousand, you might as well just take it out, because it's not going to be able to run away.
There will be somebody who isn't, but, you know.
Okay.
But the majority, I can take a look.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, next, anybody else out with that slide?
I, I guess I would continue just a little bit here, just to explain to people, this is the zoning bylaw, I realize you can't read it very clearly, but you can kind of see the colors. So the R eighty-seven, which is a minimum eighty-seven thousand square foot lot currently is Great Island. All of the yellow is the R twenty-five, where the current lot size is twenty-five thousand. But the dark orange, and it's kind of tan color, those are our forty districts, where you need to have currently a minimum of forty thousand square foot lots. It just gives you an idea of how much we are residential and what the current lot size requirements are. We'll be discussing that some more in the future as well. So, so the appearance, what does the property look like from the outside, and how is it going to be blending into your neighborhood? So the whole idea of an accessory apartment is that it's accessory, that it's subordinate to the primary residence. We want the appearance to blend in with the property and buildings, and remain out of a single-family residence, and we also want it to be designed consistent with the single-family home that's on the property now. Old Kings Highway requirements would apply if your home is located north of Route Six, and those are a little bit stricter requirements. With regard to parking, we need two parking spaces for the apartment, and we also need two parking spaces for the primary residence. Any new parking that's necessary for the accessory apartment, we want to be clear that it can't be located in the green space in front of the main house, so we don't want people paving right in front of their house, we want their front lawns to remain their front lawns, nor within ten feet of the side over your property line. And then the last item there has to do with home offices and home occupations per section four-one-six of the zoning bylaw would be allowed in both the primary and the accessory apartment. These types of uses, they do not allow any employees to come, there's no customers, there's no signage, and everything needs to be fully contained within the structure itself. So some of the examples included in four-one-six of home occupations would be crafting and sewing, internet phone sales, painting and jewelry making, and then some limited comb cooking for sale at farmers' markets or local businesses. Real estate appraisers.
Can I ask a, I have a suggestion. I really like the fact that you use the, I think this is from, is this from AARP?
Yeah.
This graphic. I think this is another opportunity to bring this graphic back as the very next slide. Because just like you're doing with the previous one, where you're going from general requirements to the zoning map, I think it would just help, because you're talking literally about appearance, to bring this, to bring this back, and just go through it one more time and point out to people, anything in red, or what you perceive as red, or not blue, is what would qualify as an ADA, as a look, because that's what the slide is describing in more written detail, sorry, with words. I think these graphics really help back it up. Thank you. Anybody else come up with that?
Yep.
So before we get into talking about dimensional standards and minimum lot sizes, I want to be sure that everybody understands what we're talking about. So there's just a couple useful, useful definitions. So kind of the dimensional standards are, how are you placing your structures on your lot? So it gives a bunch of different requirements and parameters, like how tall can your building be? How far from your property line do you have to have your, your building located? What's the maximum building coverage, and how many buildings can you have? What percentage of your lot can be taken up with a building footprint? What's the minimum size lot that you, that you need? And also what's the frontage that you need to get access to your, to your lot? All of these things are dimensional standards which are contained in the zoning bylaw. When things are considered grandfathered, or you may have some non-conforming lots or structures, these are lots, lots or structures that don't meet the current zoning bylaw, which are typically more strict than what was done in the past. But they did meet and were in full compliance at the time the lot was formed, or the structure was built, or relief was given. So you're still allowed to continue on with that, you're previously lawfully pre-existing non-conforming lot or non-conforming structure. I just wanted to identify those, those two different terms for people.
The point you might want to make about grandfathered is that many of us had twenty thousand square foot lots, which were permissible until we changed the zone to forty thousand square foot. That is a grandfathered lot.
So just give them a few examples.
Yeah, give them examples, so they understand. Well, am I grandfathered? Yeah, because you have a twenty thousand square foot lot, and then we changed it to forty thousand square foot, so you're pre-existing.
And then I just wanted to give people an idea of the fact that we do have a lot of non-conforming lots in the town of Yarmouth, and the planning board did try and take a look at that to kind of get a general idea of where we stand with non-conforming. So we have about thirteen thousand single-family lots in town, and twenty percent of those are less than ten, ten thousand square feet, so they wouldn't be eligible for an accessory apartment. But we do have sixty-two percent are less than fifteen thousand, so about thirty-eight percent of the lots would be eligible. And then our minimum lot size of twenty-five thousand square feet, eighty-seven percent don't meet that. So even our minimum residential lot size is twenty-five thousand square feet, eighty-seven percent of our lots aren't meeting that. So that shows you the severity or the significance of how, how non-conforming lots we have in the town of Yarmouth. So the planning board took all this information and started looking at, well, how can we, how can we address these particular issues? So accessory apartments, one of the things is, you're going to need to meet all the current dimensional standards for your accessory apartment. So the building coverage, the, the height of your building, how far you are from your neighbor's property line, all of that needs to meet the current bylaw, you're not getting grandfathered for any of that. You need to have a minimum ten thousand square foot lot for a studio or a one-bedroom accessory apartment. But if you want to have a larger accessory apartment of two bedrooms, you need to have a minimum of fifteen thousand square foot lot. And then, under no circumstance are you allowed to have an accessory apartment of more than two bedrooms, without, I guess, technically a variance. Although I'm not sure about that, do we, do we?
Well, I thought we, I thought it was one or two only, there's no such thing.
You cannot.
Yeah, okay, all right, excellent.
There's no variance.
Excellent, no variance, good to know.
Any questions on that screen, slide?
Seeing none, hearing none? Okay, let's go to the next one.
So I would just show them the, again, understanding that people can't really see this, this map, and we'll have the map up in the room and we'll reference that, but you can kind of see the colors. So things that are white or red, those are either not single-family homes, or they're less than ten thousand square feet, so you, they wouldn't be eligible. But if you have a blue, that's a ten, that's a less than fifteen thousand square foot lot, but greater than ten thousand, so that you might be able to have a studio or a one-bedroom. And the green is lots over fifteen thousand square feet, which would be eligible for a two-bedroom.
If possible, Kathy, and I know there's a lot going on in this slide, but what you just said is great. But on the slide itself, maybe next to where the blue is, it could say in parentheses, one bedroom only, or up to one bedroom. And then maybe under the green, next to the green, it could say, up to two bedrooms, right? Just to, again, just be very clear. Again, notwithstanding whatever people can see versus what you can see in the room.
You can do an arrow.
However, however graphically it makes sense, I thought maybe under the legend, it could be highlighted, I don't know. Or as an example on the map, like Susan's saying. Just, again, another way of just sort of emphasizing where the break is between one and two, or studio.
I think then this was, because we're showing the wellhead protection, I would highlight the fact that, you know, some of the residential lots are located within the zone two, and that has some special restrictions unto itself, which we'll get into in a minute. I think we want to talk about.
So then what I just suggested, would that make it more confusing?
No.
Well, I just want to, well, I'm asking because then the next slide is going to say, well, if you're actually, right? Aren't there some greens in zone two?
There are, yep.
Then they wouldn't be able to have two bedrooms.
Well, it depends on what their, what their grandfather.
Again, I'm just, we're just bouncing this back and forth.
So maybe we continue before we ask questions and talk about the zone, yeah.
Maybe, I, I don't know, I just, these might be the kinds of things that people would say, okay, I followed you to here, and then you threw the well thing at me.
And that could be, that could be the issue.
Well, I mean, and it isn't anybody's fault, like I said, like, we're just, we're following the bouncing ball here.
This is the exception to the exception, really.
Right, and, and so I don't know how to graphically represent that, like, it's almost like net, you almost need another slide that shows net-net. No, again, Kathy, I'm not, I saw your reaction, but I didn't mean it that way.
No, I don't know what that means.
But what I'm saying is, net-net, for instance, if according to the lot size you're this, and then according to the well-protection district you're this, map three shows really what you can have.
Well, I think it's, it's.
Again, I'm, I'm over.
I just said that.
Oh, Siri, leave me alone. I'm, I'm oversimplifying, but I'm suggesting that could be a potential tripping, tripping point for some folks.
I think explaining this in the zone two of what that means, because if, some people are grandfathered, they may have a, you know, an eighteen thousand square foot lot, but they have three bedrooms. So they're grandfathered for three bedrooms, so they, but the point that thing needs to be emphasized is you may need to take one of the bedrooms out of your home and put it into the accessory apartment. And there's people, at two point two people per, per home right now, there's probably a lot of spare bedrooms that people necessarily wouldn't mind doing that.
Okay, well, again, I hope I didn't make it more confusing by talking about the maps and the.
I, I don't think I did. I guess one of my, simple questions, somebody's going to say to you, to us, is, what's the difference between wellhead protection area and zone two well contribution area?
It's the same.
Should we use the two terms?
We use them two terms.
Where do I say that?
So in slide thirteen, we say wellhead protection area, and then fourteen, we say zone two well contribution area. They do look pretty much the same.
Um, yeah, they are.
Maybe we can change wellhead protection area to zone two well contribution area.
Wellhead protection area actually on the town map isn't identified, is that, is that between the rules?
No. It, it's, it's the aquifer protection district, but that's greater than the zone two.
Greater than, okay.
I think your point is, it's, it literally is what it says on the map, or zone two areas of wellhead contribution.
Because a lot of people are going to stand there and look and go, where's my house?
Exactly, and that's totally, to be expected. Especially as we were talking in previous drafts, when we finally got that great chart about lot size. I think that's going to be another thing that people are going to, they're going to walk right up to that map and want to put a pin in.
I mean, I've been talking for this for months, and I just looked to see what color mine was, even though I already knew.
I don't know, I mean, this, this is like a five-page pieces of information, so it might make sense to kind of go back to this when people are asking their questions, versus trying to add it, we could add it in again.
I'm not saying make a flow chart, but what I am saying is, in people's minds, it's, it's almost, it's either a checklist or a flow chart. It's like, my, my lot size is, that's step one. Maybe not.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and then it's, my lot is located in.
Are you a single-family home?
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying like.
Tried to do the flow chart, and it's getting complicated.
I respect that.
It's like that one where you pour the water, and you try to figure out how to dip to that bucket, you know, that one.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know the right way to do it, but I do feel like, after seeing all this happening, and even though we're stopping, and even though we're being deliberate, it's still going to come out to, what about me? And maybe, just maybe, there's a way of summarizing these three or four slides to say, here's how you could, here's, here's the three questions you need to ask yourself. How big is my lot?
It is.
And where is it located? And then, and then maybe at least that gives people, because again, you can anticipate, there are going to be people that may want to interact with town officials and town departments after some of these hearings and listening sessions, much less, heaven forbid, this actually passes at special town meeting. So these are the kind of things that, again, I think anybody would reasonably ask, well, how do I know? And what do I need to know?
The question there is that if you're really not in zone two, the question is, how big is my lot? But if you're, no, I agree with you, I agree with you. The question there is that a lot of people are going to say, it doesn't probably make it if I'm not in zone two, but the zone two people are going to be interested in answering both those questions. How big is it, and then, because they're for the restrictions, as you said, they're for the restrictions, and that's the point we want to make. If you're in zone two, you need to pay attention.
So maybe it's, how big is your lot, where is it located? Are you in zone two?
Right.
Right, that's sort of the, see the requirements for zone two.
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's the way to think about it. And again, I recognize you don't need to make a flow chart, but it could help just for some posterity, as well as for people who are going back to this after the fact, or even watching the recording, heaven forbid, that it's a really simple, it's hopefully a simple process to at least take this thing and bring it down to your backyard. a simple process to at least take this thing and bring it down to your backyard. What does this mean to me?
You may go do what people do.
Kathy, do you understand what I'm, what I'm driving at? And again, I don't want to, I can understand why the flowchart thing would, could get convoluted.
I think we can, you know, here are the main things you might want to ask. This person's individual, but these are some of the key things if you want to know whether you're eligible.
And again, you're stating all of this, but I do feel like, a way to, a way to combine them into some actions, which is what I think a lot of people are going to want to know. Okay, now what? What do I do with all this information?
How is it detected? Did you say that?
That, that.
How is it detected?
Thank you, Kathy, for letting us come through. This is very helpful.
Love that, Kathy?
Yep.
Want to go to your next one?
I think then the next kind of thing that the planning board took a look at, well, how big should the units be and how should they, what size should they be in relation to the primary residence? So studio and one-bedroom accessory apartments can't be more than 50% of the habitable floor area of the primary residence. And I'll give an example later. Or 800 square feet, whichever is smaller. For two-bedroom, you can have, it's the same thing, 50% of the habitable floor area, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Under no case, regardless of the habitable floor area, do we want to have a unit less than 350 square feet? Because we want it to be a functional living unit for people. How we describe habitable floor area is it's excluding garages, it's excluding unfinished attics, basements, common entries, porches, and decks.
Kathy, I would just suggest that you might want to underline the word excludes, because I think a lot of people just-
Yep.
I think A, it's worth emphasizing, and B, a lot of folks like me sometimes will just blow through certain words, and I do think we want them to stop. Didn't we mention basements, finished or not finished, last meeting?
Yep. So any, so we took, we did unfinished, instead of saying unfinished attics and basements, it's unfinished attics, basements, whether it's finished or not.
It's excluded.
It's excluded. So that's why in the example that I gave here, it's a 900 square foot ranch, and I wanted to add a garage, a 200 square foot attached garage, and a 600 square foot finished basement. Would be considered to have only 900 square feet of habitable floor area since garages and basements are excluded, and could have an accessory apartment of up to 450 square feet.
I was told there's going to be no math, Susan.
Math?
Math. Now, there's math.
It's a simple word.
Or math. We shouldn't have that either during the public hearing.
No.
So this just gives people an idea of what the different unit sizes might look like with the studio to the left, one bedroom in the middle, and then a two-bedroom.
Do you think it's, you think there's some confusion, because you say unfinished attic and then you just say basement? So should you, it's almost, would somebody, uh- Attic, sorry, go ahead. Unfinished attic and then basements, common entry, should I say? Is it clear enough? I'd say all basements.
All basement.
All new basements up to the front, and say, "These basements, garages, unfinished-"
Right, I'll tell you the best. Basement first.
Yeah, just needed some points else in the sentence.
Or, or garages, comma, basements, comma, unfinished attic.
Yep.
I hear what you're saying. Some people might think the word unfinished is still applying to basements if it comes after, even though it's separated by a comma.
I'd say people blow through these things.
I, yeah.
You just have to remember to switch that around. Or you can simply say, "Finished/unfinished basements," or whatever.
More all basements.
All basements, or all basements.
All is a really important word there, because again, that's where, again, most people in their heads go to, "What about, you don't have to, you just eliminate that."
Well, it's your porches. Whether it's here, there, and closed, or whatever. Some people have those 10-foot porches, but still don't include it in the calculation.
I put a note there, we refer to your assessors' property recognition.
Just when you, just when you thought people weren't confused enough, Jim.
Andy will kill me.
I really do appreciate these floor plans, too. I think, again, it's sort of consistent with what we're doing in this, in this session. I really do appreciate it, Kathy. Whether it's with the AARP representation, the maps, I think the more we're feeding the eyes with pictures and graphics and not just words, the more all this information, hopefully, they'll land, they'll be absorbed.
I agree.
Your picture says a thousand words.
That too.
There you go.
Okay, ready to go to the next screen?
So how are we going to permit accessory apartments? So before we get into that, again, I think we need to identify some terms for everybody. So the difference between what is considered a special permit versus something that's considered by right. So by right, that basically means that the particular use that you're using and how you're developing your property doesn't require any relief from the zoning bylaw. You're meeting it, and you can proceed right to the building department for your building permit. You still need to meet the building code, you still need to meet the zoning bylaw, and you still need to meet all other state and local codes.
Can I just, again, I think some people are going to see this, I would just suggest, proceed to the building department to apply for a building permit.
And can apply for a building permit.
However, I think that's an important clause in there, because it makes it seem like you can just go to Mark and stick out your hand, and he'll hand you one. Again, I hope you understand why I'm bringing this up, because as Susan set the frame about a half an hour ago, I just think we should anticipate the kind of questions people are going to have.
It's automatic.
At least on what you're, again, I hope you understand, Kathy, why we're doing that.
No, no, I'm not.
Your suggestion is to change, so we proceed to apply.
Yeah, to apply for a building permit.
However, however you think it's best, but I do think it should be tightened. All right, thank you.
No, that's great. In contrast, a special permit, that's something that requires relief in some fashion from the zoning bylaw, typically through the zoning board of appeals, the DVA, sometimes under certain circumstances, it can be the planning board. But this, this is, the big difference is that it requires a formal public hearing with a butter notification. So if you're in a butter to, within 300 feet of someone who's trying to develop an accessory apartment, if it's special permit, you're getting a notification in the mail. There would also be a publication in the paper about the public hearing, and you could come to the meeting and give comments at the meeting and/or provide written comments ahead of the meeting if you're not able to attend. This is a case where you can comment on-
I think there's another opportunity to make this really clear. I think it should say that last sentence under special permits requires a public hearing with notification to all the butters within 300 feet. I just, I think it's just another opportunity to let there be no ambiguity, because a lot of us, when we hear a butter notification, we don't, we kind of know what that is, but I do feel like there's an opportunity to-
Requires public hearing with butter notification within 300 feet.
However, however, all butters within, however you'd like to phrase it.
That's a good point, because a lot of people don't know whether they can comment on that.
And short of-
Actually, you get the formal notification if you live in a community, but anyone can come in and comment.
Sure.
I mean, a little bit of standing as a butter, but anyone can come in and comment. If you live at the end of the street and you have the long street, you can still come in and comment, but this is a legal requirement that the town has to notify you. So that's, yeah, the beginning of the, that's a good point.
Just trying to take your questions. Do you think there's, do you think there's merit in moving this, these two slides to the beginning? Because up until this point, I was wondering when the special permit was going to come up, and we've already gotten feedback about the special permit concerns, about special permits. So I don't know if it's out of place, out of order in terms of thinking and thought process, but I mean-
You mean move the whole thing out?
I just, I think you're going to stop after every slide, and I would bet at some point, someone's going to say, "What about special?" Do this by right. Is this allowed by right? Or-
And you're going to have to say, "Well, we'll get to that later."
That is one of the reasons in the agenda, I listed all the provisions, so people could see that each one will be listed. My only concern about moving it is I think how you feel about special permits might be impacted based on knowing all the other criteria that's in place. That's all.
Although, I think Peter's got a point in terms of timing. You know, you don't want to be here until midnight, and if you stop after every single provision and take comments, this is, if James, uh, Peter said the 800-pound gorilla, I mean, this is the, this is where the rubber hooks are, you know, this is, so it may be more identified as a significant issue earlier than, than-
Well, for example, it says, "Fully conforming lot and structures." We need to have defined what dimensional standards are and all of the things and the lot sizes and stuff before we can, people would understand what that might mean.
Did you mention that this slide is coming for-
Yeah, I think in the agenda, we can certainly-
So that they don't stop after every slide to-
Ask about-
Because this might answer someone's question, and they might be just quite a bit more comfortable with everything else that's said before it.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's kind of two things here, actually. It is the 800-pound gorilla. How you meld it into it, I think there's some value to what Kathy said about building the foundation by creating all the different areas and then, then going to it. So I kind of go in both ways, but we need to make sure that people understand that these other items are part of the process as well.
I think you're right. The special permit issue, I think, is going to be the biggest one, and we can certainly emphasize that in the agenda, just saying, we're going to be talking about special per- I mean, I can list them, I can even mention them, each one, and then when I get to that and say, "I know that there's been a lot of comment about this already, we're going to talk about that."
You could say, "Our dream is to, okay, here's the framework. We're going to talk about intent, blah, 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 and then ultimately, of course, we'll have a discussion about the policy which is by right versus..." Let them know, just setting the framework first, and then the policy, how the policy's going to fit into the framework.
I agree. That's the expectation, because I do agree, a lot of people are going to come in maybe just for this, which makes sense, and at least give them a sense of, "Okay, I can, I'm going to wait a few minutes," or many minutes. It's not going to be coming up right away. Yeah.
Because for a lot of them, whether it's by right or by special permit, the rest of this stuff is almost irrelevant, because if they do it by special permit, they've got a choice to comment on the size, the setbacks, that kind of stuff. So it works either way, but I do think it's great, I think it's a good idea to sort of set the framework for what we're talking about. Here's what we're talking about. Here's what it's going to look like. Here's the room size, here's blah, blah, blah. And then how do you take all of that and put it into a policy consideration, which is the by right versus? How do you take all of the, and actually, whether it's by right or by special permit, all those processes are exactly the same. I think Mark said that ages ago. You know, your lot size, your house size, it's all identifiable, except for the issue of public notice. There's no relief for, you know, by right, there's no relief for special permit. All of these things are going to apply regardless of whether it's by right or by special permit. So that, that's the important thing, I think, that people have to understand. It's, that's a big issue. Everything's been a whole, you know, the 950, the dimension, all that's going to be exactly the same. The big issue is the difference between by right and by special permit. And they'll get there. That's what we can say, and they'll get there.
So let me go back to the useful definitions. Is anybody comfortable with the-
I don't know if Kathy talked about the criteria yet.
Yeah. So when the zoning board of-
Finish that slide, Jim.
Sure. When the zoning board of appeals is, is looking at a special permit, they have specific criteria that they look at, and it's related to no undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion will be created, and that there is no substantial harm to the established or future character of the neighborhood or town. And that's standard for all special permits. Sometimes you have more criteria, but that's the criteria that would apply for anything.
The zone, yep.
So the, so the planning board took a look at what, were there some certain provisions that they felt comfortable allowing by right and others that they were more comfortable with special permits? So the compromise that came up was that special permits are required for all accessory apartment uses, except for three very specific by right options. One of them is if you are fully conforming lot and structure. That means once you've constructed your accessory apartment, you're constructing it on a lot that meets the current minimum lot size, it meets the current height requirements, and it meets the current dimensional requirements. So as I mentioned before, our minimum residential lot size is 25,000 square feet, but the vast majority of our town's residential is 40,000 square feet. I'm not sure, and we mentioned how many, I think it's only 7% of the entire residential lots that are over 40,000 square feet in the entire town yard. The second option is whether you have a conforming or non-conforming structure in an apartment that's located entirely within the existing primary residence. There's going to be some potential bump outs for access and egress in order to be sure that for meeting building code, but essentially, the entire accessory apartment is located within the existing structure, and it's also limited to a studio and a one-bedroom. And then the third option is if you're doing an expansion or some type of new construction, maybe it's a detached or an addition, it needs to meet all the current height and dimensional requirements. It needs to be on a minimum 25,000 square foot lot, so it's a larger sized lot, and limited to studio and any one bedroom. I just want to point out that accessory apartment uses are always going to be required to have a special permit in aquifer protection district, which encompasses, it encompasses all of that zone two and even a little bit more. So it's important for people to know what your zoning district is within that. There's a, and I didn't get into it this year, but there are a lot of other reasons why you might need to get a special permit, depending on what you're doing with, with your lot. So that's why I say potential for by right. There may be some weird circumstance where they already have some special permit that might need relief, I don't know. So there's no guarantee that it will always be by right if you're meeting all of these particular, because we're talking about uses.
So I think the comment is, in general-
In general, yeah.
The other thing that might be beneficial is, so like, fully conforming lot, example, you have a one-acre lot, your house is, you know, this is an example of a, of a fully conforming one-acre lot, you know, 2,000 square foot house, about a 500 square foot. And also, the other thing that might be important to note is that two-bedroom requires a special permit, because we're saying what it doesn't, but somewhere, because when you read these are the ones that you don't-
Not in one. One, you could have a two-bedroom.
Correct. Thank you for catching that.
And just because sometimes my brain is mushy at this time of day, one acre is how many square feet?
43,560 square feet.
Well, again, I think, the reason I bring that up is because we're talking about thousands of square feet, and Jim, you're using a term that you use all the time, and I'm just suggesting that if you say one-acre lot, maybe we put in parentheses, 43,000 square feet, just to stay consistent. For everybody, again-
I'd just say 40,000 square foot lot.
However-
Because 40,000 is the zoning, you know, they call that a builder's acre.
Okay.
Still 3,000 square feet.
So I think it's fair to say, as Peter mentioned and as everybody knows, this is going to be the part that's going to, after we stop for comments, will go probably the longest. So one of the things I was thinking about is, especially as you talk about number two, So, one of the things I was thinking about is, especially as you talk about number two, is, again, maybe the possibility of using some of those graphics that you used from the, from the AARP, because literally, you could put up on the screen, again, this is not, this has nothing to do with whether this makes it into the final bylaw that we take the special town meeting. But being able to see, um, the ones that are graphically represented as completely within the house, meaning, uh, let's see, interior upper level, interior lower level, right? Am I saying this correctly? Would those qualify in number two? Within the existing primary residence, there's a third one on the top, and then the rest on the left. So again, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, if we're gonna put these things in writing, which are important, I think we can also, as we've done in previous examples during this presentation, also give people pictures. And again, Kathy, I know you're gonna have a lot of air traffic controlling to do, but I do feel that this just reinforces, again, we're not, we're not hiding anything. We understand that this is something that will garner a lot of feedback, and we will continue to gather that feedback on, over all the listening sessions, but it's just an opportunity to kinda reinforce these words with some pictures. I don't know of other pictures, as Jim was mentioning, or it, I guess it just falls under the category of, the more examples, the better.
May- maybe we break this up then, um-
Each one gets its own slide?
Yeah.
Can you put the picture of those?
Yeah.
Yeah? I think that, what do you think of that?
They're, they're gonna be the, the areas of discussion, so I'm fine with, with breaking them up into three separate.
I hope it gives Kathy more room to visually, like, really put the detail in. Again, as we gather the feedback as to whether this is all gonna make it to the actual final proposed bylaw, special town meeting.
So you're gonna do these into three separate, uh, slides?
Yeah, I need to think about it and see what I can come up with, for graphics. Um, I, I like the idea of the example, I think that that, we can kind of do the similar thing, with the highlight at the bottom, and then maybe, maybe a graphic in the slide.
I happened to look at the AARP, I kept it.
Yeah.
And it's got tons of, you know, this, that summary page is great, because it shows everything I want, but it did give a lot of other, uh, graphic examples of AD, of ADUs that I think could come in handy in these kinds of sections.
They have a lot of information on their website about ADUs, because they really, you know, see it as a valuable alternative for seniors, so, um-
Well, thank you for considering it, because I do feel like, the more and more deliberate, especially in this section we are, I think the better that maybe the quality of the response and the feedback we're gonna get too.
Yeah, a picture is worth a lot, first, for sure.
It also may be worth, again, just a suggestion, the APD, so, we've sort of been moving along here, we've got a Zone Two, we've got a well protection district, and now we have a third animal to show up on our zoning map. And again, I, I don't know if it's worth throwing up on a slide where the APD is. I understand you're saying it out loud, Kathy, but again, we're feeding all this information visually to folks.
Am I in the APD? Where is my, where is my house?
I don't know, I just-
I'm sure that's the biggest, people are gonna, that screen is gonna be one of the most lit that, is where am I? How do I fall into this big picture?
Yep.
It's the, I mean, that's, nobody cares about their neighbors, how they fall into it, they wanna know how they fall into it.
Well, and then their neighbors are a close second, Jim. Right. Is that fair to say? I think so. But again, something to consider, Kathy, because I think this whole process that we're doing tonight in this meeting is to anticipate the kinds of questions that we're gonna get, and I really do feel like people are gonna say, you threw another map at me, but at least now I understand where it affects me, or if it affects me, sorry.
Um, I feel like you need to have to say something about water quality, because it, it has been mentioned, uh, it's been questions that have been asked. It is, you know, this is a general comment, you know, about we need more housing, how do we add, add more housing, but we also have impaired waterways, we have some drinking well issues, how, how are we making sense?
And our purpose and intent says, no significant impact to our environmental resources. So you also can literally say that, like, we need to, we're tying this back to our intent.
Right. But, but how strongly, I don't know.
Right.
Um, be- because, you know, as we mentioned, inside the Zone Two, there's the additional regulations, but outside the Zone Two, if you can meet the health department regulations, which is essentially, you know, Title Five with some enhancements, um, and you are willing to construct it, you, you might be able to add a bedroom. Um, we do wanna give some good news, if phase one of the municipal wastewater program was approved at the twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting, um, and that, um, the build-out analysis included a thousand new bedrooms throughout all eight phases of the property. So, um, although connecting to existing neighborhoods is gonna take a little while, we're making a lot of progress. I mean, I don't know how you guys wanna address this.
Okay, so when I hear a thousand new bedrooms, I don't know, that's, that's a, that's a lot. Uh, again, I understand it's gonna be phased over forty years in eight different sub-districts, right?
Mm-hmm.
But I, so, I'm glad we're talking this through, because, again, what's anybody gonna think when they see this? They're gonna go, are those bedrooms going in mine, maybe?
Well, I guess my first question is, how many bedrooms do we have now, and is that a thousand, like, two percent increase, or?
Jim, it's not a scary number.
I don't know what that number is.
Yeah, I mean, what, we got thirteen thousand? Yeah, what's it, blocks?
Times, equal lot.
At least at two point five.
Thirteen thousand lot parcels.
Yeah, we have like twenty-six, probably twenty-six thousand, thirty thousand bedrooms in.
These bedrooms will also go toward non-ADU usage too, I mean, somebody that just wants to expand their single family.
Does this also include some, this is residential, not commercial?
Correct.
This is just single.
Again, another thing, 'cause some people, I don't, I understand where you're going with this, Kathy, because you're right, this can, this can take a can of worms and open it up into another can of worms.
As I recall, the last official position of the Hyannis Park Civic Association was based on this issue, and then, a lot, unless they changed it, but I think at the J U A meeting, or the last official position, I think then the board just said that they had, they did not, they did not, they should be doing anything that they used strictly because of the water issue. So you're right, well, it could be like-
Before we got wastewater passed.
No, regardless, they said, they said we shouldn't do anything, even though they anticipated the wastewater passing, we shouldn't do anything for five years until it's been passed. So I do think it's a slim issue. I think it's a big issue, and I think it's something we should mention, because we have it as part of our purpose and intent. And we can double check, but I do think that with the last, it was all based on this one.
I, I do know that Christine Greeley's last letter, where she listed a bunch of questions, where, you know, how are we, how is this meshing with our environmental issues that we have? I also think that maybe somewhere, we need to talk a little bit more about, this is, and I know that Jim has said this, this is one prong in a multi-pronged attack to, to address, to address housing, and I don't think that we're gonna be getting these significant, um, numbers, um, of people who are willing to, to spend the money um, to get, uh, you know, a building code compliant and a health septic system compliant accessory apartment. Um, we can give those examples of some other communities, and, and kind of what we had answered in the frequently asked questions. But this, you know, this, this is the, you know, you can't look at the two things in silos, they're, they're, they're intricate and connected.
Alright, so I'm a person out in the, in the audience now, and I see this, and I read your last bullet, and I say to myself, "A significant number of new bedrooms are not anticipated from the accessory apartment due to construction costs, code compliance, and landlord obligations." Why the heck are we doing this?
Because you might get twenty a year, twenty bedrooms.
Again, I'm playing the devil's advocate, that's the first, you know, why, well then, why are you doing this?
It does speak to the, statewide, it does speak to the town, this could be an opportunity then, to, to, to show some of the context about where, how this is going in other towns. Um, also, in speaking of context, Jim, so I'm glad you brought it up, you know, a thousand divided by eight is what, one twenty-five, roughly? So I mean, again, a thousand seems like a scary number, even before you know that there's thirteen thousand parcels times whatever. So, the way this is presented, could, a thousand could scare people. A hundred and twenty-five per phase doesn't scare people as much. I'm not saying you should say one or the other, but I do think it's reasonable for people to say, how does this affect me? We keep coming back to that.
You could also, you know, it's about how you formulate your answers on questions. I guess part of it could be, keeping in mind, we're restricting the growth, the future growth of our community by only an additional thousand bedrooms. These accessory units will be counted in that growth.
I, I think we need to be clear on, on what the build-out did. You know, the build-out, we were estimating a bunch of things. We didn't assume everyone was gonna build up to the maximum that they wanted, we wanted a reasonable number. So, when we looked at that, we assumed a thousand. That doesn't mean if some of these other things are lower, that, that it couldn't be higher. We were also using Title Five flow rates, which are probably almost twice what is an actual flow rate, which is kind of what the wastewater is gonna be using. And then there's gonna need to be flow allocation regulations to how things get done. So I just wanna say that it's just a thousand, because it was just an, an estimate that was used in order to come up with a maximum build-out for our community.
You almost need to say, hey, if you would like to learn more about this, please go to the next RAC meeting. I mean, literally, what this is, I mean, and again, I'm not trying to be glib, but like, this, this slide is an entire community. I'm not sure how else to say it. And maybe, so, it's a good thing that we're bringing it up, because I agree with what everybody's saying, is you can't, none of this is happening in a vacuum. Um, but at the same time, I also don't think we can spend an hour on this slide, because literally, it's possible that, that whatever we present here could completely derail us in these listening sessions, so I don't know how to set people up for success, because I also agree that to not put it in is not responsible, um, because literally, you haven't even said a word about the right half of this slide. That's not even lis-, that's not even listed with the words on the left, because I know what the right side of the slide means, that graph, but it's not represented in the words on the left side. That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother discussion.
It's a whole other issue.
So like, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, but, um, I'm glad that we're talking about it now, um, before we have these listening sessions, because literally, I could, if Ken was here, he'd probably be saying the same thing. Like, hello, what do you think I'm doing for a, twelve, ten hours a month? And it almost feels like, A, they need to be responsible to get people to understand the context, but B, we also can't and aren't the right body and the right hearing to have an in-depth discussion about it. So we have to be, like you said, upfront about it.
So, here's a thought.
Nothing is preventing you right now, other than the same regulations if you wanted to add a bedroom to your house.
Mm-hmm. So my, my thought is this, we're talking about Zone Two wells in Slide fourteen. Why don't we just put a bullet somewhere there and talk about the issues of water quality, rather than having a separate?
Put it together with the other questions.
Take nineteen and, and kind of-
Or could it, could at least go after?
After, after, after fourteen.
The information might make more sense after Slide fourteen, or even as part of, however you wanna.
I originally have them together, but then I was talking about Zone Two, so I moved it over, but I could easily move wastewater over to-
Well, because literally, the first bullet here is outside Zone Two, and you've just spent time talking about Zone Two, and maybe you've got a whole people.
Okay. Do you wanna expand upon it in some way? Do you wanna talk about, like, have another slide or something that talks about, um, you know, the anticipated number of accessory apartments? I mean, there's a lot to, to, to constructing an accessory apartment, and zoning is just one tiny little piece of it.
Right.
I don't wanna get into the weeds, go ahead.
I, well, I, I've been wondering, when you say water quality, obviously, that's, that's not a, and, and all those factors, but I'm thinking drinking water. I mean, if I'm listening to this, I'm saying, we had a drought last year, we were all under, you know, those conditions, and nowhere do we talk about drinking water, availability drinking water.
I think it's starting a plastic bottle.
Originally, way, at the very-
Okay, okay.
Originally, at the very beginning, we had limited it to, you can't increase the number of bedrooms on your property. The idea being that you're technically not increasing the load, or the estimate of the loads of either wastewater or water needs on, on your property if you're keeping the bedrooms.
What you just said feels like the last slide. In other words, after all this, sorry to interrupt, all this conversation, it almost feels like the last slide would be, where do you live? What district do you, you know, how big is your lot, where do you live, and don't forget you can't, what you just said, Kathy. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just trying to, because we're, we're attempting to, to present a lot of things deliberately, and that's great, but almost at the end, some people are gonna be like, okay, so now what?
I also think this point about the, the, uh, estuary piece of this, I don't know what that adds to the conversation. In fact, I think it muddies it. So I, I could take that out and just have narrative there. What do you think? Because it, I think it muddies the conversation.
You know, this is a discussion about accessory apartments, um, and where they're located, and the fact that we have a sewer system is, you know, I don't know, maybe it's gonna be a, a line of discussion, but I don't, I don't think we've heard a lot of discussion about water quality.
I don't think we've heard it, but I think obviously this huge amount of conversation is happening.
Yeah, because that is something, Jim, we, we kept hearing, especially in our initial meetings, where people were super concerned, especially in Hyannis Park and other places of similar layout, that, you know, oh my gosh, we're gonna get more people flushing toilets, taking showers, affecting the, you know, which again, in turn, affects our drinking water.
It ended up being more of a conversation about flushing toilet, but the, but the initial conversations were absolutely drinking water, showers, increased use of water.
The water. And, and, and here's the other thing, which is why it comes back to the context of how many towns are actually doing this, and to what, to what degree, is, all of this conversation, and I don't believe, we don't have any limitations, right, in our, in our proposed bylaw, as I think another town or two does, is, right, one of the towns has a limit to the number of ADUs.
Yes, Dennis, Dennis has got them.
Right, but, so what I'm, so even the highest number, which is Barnstable, I think, is in the twenties?
Twenty-four.
So, and I'm not saying, because we don't, here's the big, the big, the nine hundred pound rule is, we have no idea how many people are actually gonna do it. We just don't. But at the same time, we do have some data from other towns that have gone through this. Is that valuable context to be sharing here as well?
We don't know the number, but we, we're, we know that it's a pool. Huge number because of the restrictions that we have in place.
So maybe there's a way to kind of get across to everybody that, when we finally get to the bylaw, and God willing, in October, what is the total pool of, of possible, uh, ADUs that could come, and that would be eligible, and I don't know the answer to that question, but could it be two dozen? The pool obviously is way bigger, but could the net, net, net effect be a dozen?
Honestly, we don't know. Historically, based upon review of other towns' history, we can see that units are created at somewhere around ten a year, ten to twelve a year. Um, whether that happens in our town or not, we don't know, because of the other, the water quality issues, the zoning issues, the site size, you know.
Every town has a different bylaw.
And, and how the economy will, will play out into the future. So those are just approximately things that we'd actually know.
Yeah. My lady has said that genuinely, Yama, has never been a typically pro-ADU tenant, for whatever reason, she said, we've done it, and maybe it's because our bylaw is restricted just to family accessory and affordable, and so, we've done a decent job with that, but we're leasing that, so we can't predict. But she, at least in her conversation, you know, she did, she said, people need this because we do have the smaller lot sizes, people are concerned about this, and she said, there's never been an overwhelming, um, you know, uh, drive to, to have more.
I mean, I would argue that, but, um, I think that might more apply to the affordable and the family unit, because you need to have a blood person, or you're gonna tell you how much you can rent it for. So those two items were the, probably the biggest issues of defeating the nineteen, the two, twenty nineteen bylaw. Now, we're taking those away, I, I-
So, Kathy, would you mind just pulling up Slide eleven for a second? Again, I know we're not done-done, but it feels like we're trying to synthesize some of this. So, at some point, does it make sense to sort of do another version of this at the end, in terms of takeaways, because literally, twenty-six hundred comes right off, right? First twenty-six hundred.
Put a red line to it.
Well, okay, I will. So like, part of me is almost just kind of like, we're trying to set context as much as we're also trying to give detail. And I can understand why some people, and again, it's all neighborhood specific, at least based on the feedback that we've heard over the last several months, but I think a lot of people are like, oh my God, there's gonna be thousands of these things, right? And so, I think it's also our responsibility to not just, to have, uh, educate on the wideness, the width of the funnel, right? Because that's what we're doing at the beginning, but at the end, maybe we need to kind of understand, like, here's the narrow part of the funnel, where this is really coming out. Um, again, I understand that this is me speaking words, and it may not turn into anything, but it feels like by the end of this, there might be a way to graphically say, here are the towns are doing, here's how many parcels are even eligible, um, I don't know, it might be viable, it might be.
You know, I think at the macro level, I hate going back to it, but I think it's the eight hundred pound rule. I, I do think that the, a lot of these conversations about size, lot size, dimension size, um, will be less frantic, I guess. So, uh, uh, the number of things that could be built will be less frantic, and it's frightening. If residents knew, that they would be pretty confused of, that there was gonna be the issue of public notice. I think a lot of these, I think a lot of these fear, a lot of the concern about, is it gonna be in my neighborhood, is it gonna be, um, but that's at the, that's at the more macro level. This is, I think all of the discussion about the detail is very good, but I don't think that's going to, for someone to know that, you know, it's not gonna be any bigger than nine hundred spare feet on it, is interesting, but they wanna know if it's in my neighborhood, or I know about it. And I think it's gonna be more, that's my, means the whole thing. I think a lot of these, because the policy is, the process is exactly the same. Um, it's the, it's the process that, of civic engagement that is the, is, I think, that drives a lot of the final determination about, am I for this or against it? Can I participate, or can't I? And I've, it would be said this now continues since November. I, I have always thought that is a significant issue. Uh, the rest of it is whizzes and twizzies, and we're finding it when they're relaxing it, or if they're making a day, or that regard, that we are opening up more, you know, opportunity. Uh, but at the same time, that we, that, that relaxing, I think, puts an additional burden on town leaders to make sure that people do participate in the process. And the concept of participation, I think, will lessen the fear of, is it gonna be a thousand in my neighborhood, is it gonna be? I think that's sort of where it all plays together. Uh, it's, it's process versus, you know, the, the actual details of the proposal. The details are important, but it's the process, I think, that's gonna drive people's decisions.
Okay, so let's go back to, what are we gonna do with screen, uh, slide, yeah, Slide nineteen, please.
I think we should put it up by fourteen.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, we're gonna get rid of the graphic, and maybe we'll add some additional information about, you know, the anticipated number of apartments, using some references to some other. And I think maybe we'll add into the slides about, not everyone's gonna wanna do this, and why, because of the costs of construction, meeting building code, meeting health code, um, not wanting to be a landlord. I have zero interest in being a landlord myself.
So we'd also give the reasons to do it. I mean, I totally agree with what you said.
I think the people who wanna do it don't need any reasons to do it, they already know the reasons.
I agree with you, but what about the people that don't know what they don't know, which is part of the reason why we're doing this, right, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
Meaning, that some people might go, well, holy guacamole, I got a three-bedroom house, I don't use the third bedroom. I'm living on a fixed income, so. Again, I, I'm just, I'm trying to be, I, I hear what you're saying about the reasons for someone not to do it, but I also think it's okay to give reasons for people to do it. And I'm not, just, we're just, this is a whole devil's advocate conversation, I think it's a responsibility to also say that.
Yeah, I, you know what, I think we're getting, we're doing this, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we're- Yeah, I, you know what, I think we're getting into danger, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we should say either. I think we should just present the facts.
I think the purpose and intent says that already.
Yeah, because I do think they're getting into editorial comments, and it's, and I think that's dangerous. I think they're right, if they're gonna say, here's where you should do it, there's an obligation to say, you know, there's a housing crisis, it didn't, you know, the opportunity here to, and then we get into editorial comments, and I think it's dangerous. I think if the docs, as per one of their slideshow, anyone, PowerPoint, speak for themselves. We will hear from the audience about, you know, their participation. So we'll just say-
Their editorial.
Yeah, I, I think it's dangerous, I think-
I'm glad we're at least chatting about it now before we're into the public hearing.
I, I, I- Not to interrupt you, but I think, I think what you're, you're saying is important. Why are we doing this is just as important as-
Why we, why could we dump it?
Right, why do we want to, why are we even having this discussion in the first place?
All in the purpose and intent.
I know, but-
I think Kathy's right, it's always purpose and intent.
I have no problem not, not putting anything in there, and I think we can maybe just get rid of the last, um, bullet there, um, last part of that bullet, and just kind of maybe give a reference of what other communities have.
I do think that's-
So do you wanna say that we're not anticipating a significant number? For example, these are the other communities I've seen?
How about, instead of, but anticipating, I would say, uh, something about, here's, here's- Here's what other towns, here's what other towns are experiencing with their current ADU.
Falling down.
Something like that. As opposed to nothing about anticipating and nothing about-
Have to be implemented, and for the, in other towns, you see a growth rate of approximately ten units a year. Or whatever that number might, whatever you come up with.
I, I, I think it's like ten to twelve, with the worst being Barnstable, which is very large.
Right, but I do think it's okay to show the both ends of the extreme.
It's also been effective four, five years, too.
Not that long. Not Barnstable.
Covid froze two years right out the window.
That's true, too. All right, that sounds good.
Doesn't seem like it, but yeah.
Okay, everybody- For the record, we still do care about water quality.
Oh, absolutely. I certainly do. Um, okay, so we're good with that? You wanna go to records, inspections, and enforcement?
You know, just kind of say, how are we keeping track of it? And are we really gonna be using the existing systems that we already have in place and embellishing them a little bit? Um, we're gonna require annual affidavits to the building department so that people know, or the building department knows which unit is being rented by the, by the resident, which is, is being the accessory apartment. We want some type of documentation with regard to that twelve-month lease, because we wanna be sure that we're solving the problem of lack of year-round rental housing. And we also wanna know whether this is something that's being used by a family member or it's being rented out. It matters because of the different ways with which it's regulated by the town. If you're renting it out, it needs to be registered, uh, and inspected through the health department. If it's a non-rental family apartment, that just gets inspected every two.
A non-rental family apartment.
Whether your mother live in your garage.
My mother live, and I'm not charging her any money, so it's not formally a rental, so it's not being inspected by the health department.
Let's look at the examples in there, just 'cause I think, that tripped me up, too. Or, or, or maybe there's a way of explaining it in the written format.
So, so it's a family apartment that's not being rented?
How about that?
I'm working through my own issues over here, Kathy. It just, it, I, it just caught me when I read it the first time.
Does the, does the non-rental family apartment need to be leased for a year? Or can I get a different family member in there every month?
Get a different family member in there every month.
Party.
Yeah, one kid goes up, one kid goes up, yeah, one kid goes off to college, another one drops out, new one moves in.
The family related is very popular, and I think it serves a, a, I mean, you see a lot of more multi-generational families living together, and to have a little bit of space there with an accessory apartment, I think it's good for fam harmony myself. Um, so family apartment not being rented is inspected every two years. Um, the building department and health department maintain logs of what's approved and inspected, so they're keeping track of that now, and they'll continue to keep track of that. Um, we do have enforcement, so if you're failing your inspections, or you're not doing your annual affidavits, or you're violating the zoning bylaw in any way, um, you could be subject to enforcement by the building commissioner, and that could result in you losing the-
There's a tiny little typo there, it just says building commission.
I do that all the time.
You, you mean the human, come on Kathy.
Because I'm used to commission, it's the conservation commission, it's the, Mark usually catches it for me, but I didn't have him look at this one. Um, so it could result in loss of your accessory apartment, and/or you could be subject to penalties and fines, uh, as outlined in the zoning bylaw.
One suggestion in the first bullet, I would say, 'cause it caught me, too, but just to make it crystal clear, annual affidavits to the building department are required, comma, noting which, something like that. Just so that, even though you were gonna say that, it's not written, and I think people would benefit from knowing that in perpetuity.
Um, and then the, the one thing I should probably mention is that, um, with regard to family related, we are expanding that definition a little bit, so it's not just, um, blood, marriage, or law, or other long-term family-like relationship, which is caregiving or parental in nature. So if you wanted to have a caregiver and you don't wanna charge them any rent, you could continue to, you could do that through this.
Is that on here, what you just said?
It's on my notes, on, on the page.
Okay, well, again, I'm, while we're doing the exercise, it might, I don't, I, 'cause I thought you were moved on to the next slide.
Nope.
Examples are always helpful.
Is, is there a cost for the permit for inspection? Must be something.
It, it is for the, um, register, I think it's eighty dollars with the health department, and the way it's listed in here, I think it charges fifty dollars or thirty-five dollars for it.
Yeah, if you have a, if you're gonna do a, any kind of rental, the health has a, a fee for an inspection.
Yes, no matter what type of rental.
That includes the registration.
Yes.
It's actually, I think, believe it or not, I can't remember, it was East Tamar, Chatham, Orleans, one of those three, just passed the rental registration at the town meeting last week. So there are some towns that haven't, until now, even done what we're already doing. Yeah, I, I caught my eye, too, but of course, caught my eye so much, I can't remember which town it is. But it was one of those wonderful towns on the lower Cape.
On the other side of the bridge.
The fast river, okay, oh boy. Nothing more Cape Coddy has ever been said.
Maybe do with this page, this slide, on that page.
Edit.
Edits that we, yeah, I thought?
So we do have some existing family-related and affordable apartments, so how does this bylaw impact those? And basically, it, it doesn't necessarily. These units can continue in accordance with the special permit, um, and other restrictions that may apply, if it's an affordable one, or they do have an option in the bylaw to convert to an unrestricted accessory apartment via special permit through the zoning board of appeals. So if you already have a family-related, your family member no longer needs it, and you're like, hey, I'd like to rent this out, you can go to the zoning board of appeals, um, for a special permit for that.
But what if I'm one of those three exceptions? I've had a family-related unit, but I'm on an acre of land and I wouldn't need it under the, do I need to go to the special permit to relive, relieve my family permit? Even though under the previous, if it weren't there, I wouldn't need to.
Yes, but I, I don't think that that's the case on most of them that you're gonna be doing it. Here's the story, you may have a unit already that's a thousand square feet, because you got some-
So you gotta get it started performing, at the family rate.
There's a covenant that's at the, at the registry of deeds, you have that special permit at the registry of deeds, I think you need to clear that out. I think you need that thing recorded at the registry of deeds, that says you're no longer restricted to a family. You can rent this out now. Because right now, you, there's only thing, if somebody's looking through the registry and you're selling, you get the, and you're looking at the registry of deeds, you just have a special permit that says it's family-related. You have to dig much harder.
So you have to, you have to get relieved from the permit. Okay.
I think you need to clean out some stuff. There's declaration of covenants that get registered at the registry of deeds, recorded, um, for both accessory, uh, I'm sorry, uh, affordable and family-related, that need to be cleaned out in somewhere.
Okay. As you've had it as a family-related unit, it doesn't matter now that it would be a non, it'd be a, existing non-conforming doesn't apply, number one. All right? If it's, if you had created this on an, on a, on one of those lots that would be by right today, once we change the bylaw, that family-related unit that you created, now would be by right if you would've created it today. You're on an acre of land, you're only gonna put up six hundred square foot, one.
Applies to one person, I'd be shocked.
Still have to go back to put your special-
That one person has to.
Somebody's gonna ask that.
Yeah, they will, but that, in the interest of them taking a, you know, apply for something that is, you know, they've got to- They've got to read the news over there. Let's just start there.
Everybody do that, twenty-two.
The last thing is, is what happens when you sell your property? If you've created a new accessory apartment under this new bylaw, it transfers upon sale of your property. The only obligation is that you need to submit a new affidavit to the building department and within forty-five days of the sale. Uh, if you're an existing family-related accessory apartment, uh, this is the way it works now, and it would continue to work, is that it terminates upon sale unless the new owners record a declaration of covenant within forty-five da, days of sale. And this is essentially to identify that new family member and agree to the prior conditions from the special permit. And again, if no action is taken, uh, then, then it would expire, and they would need to reapply, um, for the special, for the approval of the special permit. Essentially, the same thing also applies for existing affordable accessory apartments, except that they may also have an affordable housing restriction agreement that would also need to be renewed and recorded at the registry within that forty-five day, uh, time period. And they would also need to be sure that they're abiding by the affordability restrictions, the rental rates, and the income-eligible tenants. Again, if no action's taken, they would need to reapply for that special permit.
So is this where you would like in summary?
I don't, I don't know, I-
It's a great idea, I just need to think, I need, not at the end of the day, think about it, but it's rational.
Not the right time to start sketching slides. It just feels like, again, we're gonna pause, and then there's an opportunity, whether it's through the chair, or Kathy, or both, to just summarize, like, the net, 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 what about, how does this affect me slide? Um, and again, I'm paraphrasing, I don't know, that, that is suggestion, yes, Mr. Chairman. Kinda like it. And, and will it be, it won't answer all the questions, but it will at least give people, let's call it ninety percent of what they need to do next. And then I, of course, I would also suggest, everybody, that maybe part of what should be on the next actions is, you know, be on the lookout for the public hearing that will happen in August. You know, in other words, it's a process question, too, right, Susan? About where do we, it's almost a, where do you, where do we go from here? And also, separate slide might be, where do I go from here? As I'm thinking about this, because this, this listening session doesn't exist in a vacuum either. Um, and we're gonna have, maybe there's a way of saying, oh, right there.
Yeah, it's at the bottom, there at the day, yeah.
Good night, everybody. Say good night, Gracie. We're the only people left to know what that means. I think I'm the last one of my age.
He's too young, he don't know.
Now I feel, well, thanks, Peter.
And she would say, good night, Gracie.
So, so the last page, just kind of let people understand where we go from here, and what, what we're doing with all this great information that we get from, from everyone. So in July and August, we're gonna, planning board's gonna be really digesting all of that input, and hopefully some initial input we see from the board of selectmen, and take a look and see whether we need to make some modifications, whether there's some adjustments, um, to the bylaw amendments that would make sense based on that public input. In September and October, um, we're gonna be holding our formal public hearing, tends to be set for September sixth. Um, and planning board needs to vote on the recommendation zoning article, so they need to come to their consensus and consider any further amendments, and I got vote on recommendations twice, gosh, you guys gotta vote twice.
Kathy, I do think you should clarify here where it says, planning board vote on recommendation of zoning article. Um, planning, planning board holds formal public hearing, just, again, not to be redundant, but also just to be crystal clear.
You mean, date goes September sixth?
Well, yeah, no, I was, yeah, I was just looking, because it does say, planning board is digesting, and planning board, it's almost like, next, maybe on the left it could say, next steps, colon, planning, well, it's not, everything on there is not a next step for the planning board, so never mind.
Yeah, I got vote to recommend twice, the first one doesn't need to be there.
This literally is a slide that says, this is what the planning board's gonna do.
Yeah.
So something to consider. You know, next steps for planning board, maybe, as the title of the slide, or planning board next step? I don't know how it should be pronounced.
In the public?
Well, I just, yeah, but it also just gives everybody the sense that, like, this thing is still gonna live here for a while. Um, at least until the fall.
Yeah, and then we need to present it to the board of selectmen, who ultimately will recommend it and will not recommend it, and place it on the warrant for the twenty-three fall special town meeting, which is typically held, uh, at the end of Sept-, uh, end of October. I don't know the date as of this time, it's typically-
Just before Halloween.
It will be in that beautiful auditorium, it now has seats in it, because I've sat in it. Very cool.
If I wasn't put the date, the tentative was set, but I wouldn't put a tentative, why even do that? Just say, whole, whole, formal public hearing.
Could you say, early September? Just to give people, uh, a, a marker, then?
Anything else on that? Let's see, you work, Kathy?
Yeah, amazing.
Thank you, perhaps, it always helps, yeah.
And again, next steps, maybe, if this one says next step planning board, maybe there's one that says next steps, uh, residents. I don't know.
Are you really gonna consider further amendments? Are you gonna vote on the zoning article when it says before?
I made a mistake, there's, if, if, on recommendations of zoning articles, the first one shouldn't be there. It goes, you hold your public hearing, then you're gonna take all that input from the public hearing, decide whether you wanna make any amendments, and then you will vote on the, yeah, I'm sorry, I doubled it there. I got, I got it twice.
Okay, anything else? I don't see anybody on the screen, good there. All right, again, thank you, Kathy. Um, according to minute, the meeting minutes, so I accept a motion from a minutes of two, three, third.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes, um, of May the third, twenty-twenty-three.
I have a long discuss, and I have a second. Any discussion? We'll call, uh, Susan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Board of appeals, agenda and discussion.
Can we just send them to you?
Yep, anybody have any questions about the VDA stuff?
No.
Uh, committee updates from board members.
There will be an OSRP meeting on Friday, um, at which many exciting things will happen. And we're up to, well, I think we're gonna hear more about the survey, what, the survey is still-
Survey's still out, it's out till May twenty-sixth. I think we have, like, three hundred people have responded. It is a bit of a long survey, and I really appreciate everyone's effort in completing it.
So for the general public, if you're listening, the open space questionnaire is online at the town website. Go to it and fill it out.
Under, under department's conservation.
And also, we're gonna dive deeper into, um, the draft, um, work plan, basically, that we're working towards getting, hopefully, on a, prior to June thirtieth, the middle to the state, to the D E P. Right, I said, attempting.
I know, I, I'm the one that wants it on the third, but it's gonna be hard.
Okay.
But yeah, we have some draft chapters that we're, we're looking at, um, and we're gonna be discussing that on, on Friday.
And yeah, our committee has done an incredible amount of good work across many departments and many committees, and it's really a fascinating look, um, at what we're up to.
All the fun stuff in town.
Yeah, it is, thank you.
Any other committee updates from board members?
CDC, I'm not officially appointed yet, so I think the selectmen next week, maybe?
Kathy, it's May, May twenty-fourth, I think they're saying.
Yeah, I think you're right, yep.
So, I, I mean, I met with Karen, and we had a meeting last week. Uh, Bill Scott came in, talked quite a bit about a couple of, uh, projects he's gonna propose. Um, participation by C E D C, and, and one in particular was the phase-one vacancy redevelopment study. Did you get into that at all, were you there, Jim?
A little bit.
Little bit? No, no, um-
What is your phase-one redevelopment?
Uh-huh. It's essentially gonna- Give you a review of vacant, commercial space, non-vacant commercial space, what potential phase-one means in terms of development. Um, I'm interested, I, I think more is coming on, Kathy, does that sound right? I mean, I don't know the next step in that, I'm still kinda leaning into that a little bit. Um, Karen wasn't, wasn't at that meeting, so, uh, it was Thursday instead of Tuesday, but-
Last I heard is that, that C E D C had provided funding to do a marketing study along Route twenty-eight about what type of uses might be good to have on Route twenty. Maybe this is an expansion of, of that.
This is part, uh, this would be an expansion of that, because what you just mentioned, I've discussed before I was there, um, prior meetings, and this, this, this sounds interesting. It's gonna be a more in-depth study to- to, I think, working with the phase-one of the sewer, and, and what potentially, um, an outside consultant sees as far as potential with the commercial properties on twenty-eight, so, uh, more to come.
The thousands of just related studies, they've done, there's been some preliminary, I think, every five years, they've done a study on.
Maybe there should be a study of the studies.
Any other committee updates? Any board member items?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one thing, that, um, that Mary Villabon has done an incredible job, uh, because the Cape Cod Welcome Center on Route six eastbound is going to open next Friday. Um, and I didn't know this, but now I do, and now all of you are about to know, that they get a hundred thousand visitors between Memorial Day and middle of October. And it's an incredible amount of work, it's going to be open nine to five, seven days a week during that time. Um, and I know because of my day job, that, you know, we only get ten thousand visitors off of exit, exit six, and so, we're working together with the Arma Chamber, who again, are doing an amazing job, not to mention their own chamber building and that, its own visitor center there, too. Um, and there will be a ribbon cutting at some point in the next two weeks. Um, but it's an incredible amount of work that is literally coming from this town to help almost every single tourist that at least comes this far on their, on their adventures, um, has to go by that visitor center, and it's really hard work. And also, they've now gotten money through the state to improve it through the DOT, and it's a two-phase project, so next year, and I know CEDC is also involved, there'll be even more improvements, but there's a lot more to come, but it's a big step forward.
Hundred thousand visitors, but ultimately, ninety percent are going to end up on Route twenty-eight.
We know they're all the way up on Route six.
Exactly, they, they come down to twenty-eight, so, that's a good, but that's a good statistic, if we collapse into the, the, the twenty-eight, in South Yama. You know, what are these tourists doing, what are they coming for, what are they going to do?
By comparison, there's, the other visitor, official visitor center is on Route six in East Hill, right by Fort Hail, Fort Hail, yeah.
How many visitors do they?
That, I think Jim Russo said it was only about forty thousand. So that, it's an interesting sort of, like, who's going farther?
Yep.
Bathrooms?
They, they, they exist.
And, and, and you're halfway there.
Yes.
Can we stop, Mom?
Yep, especially if you're good, too.
But also, I'll point out, I, I'm pretty sure that the visitor center is run exclusively by volunteers.
Yes, that's a really good point, and now, and by the way, they are trying to call it the Cape Cod Welcome Center, but, we'll get there. Um, yes, it is run, is staffed entirely by volunteers through Mary, which is incredible. And some of the folks that were working at the Cape Chambers Visitor Center, which is now closing, because we're working in collaboration with Route six, and, and with the Arma Chamber, um, was always run by volunteers, which is kind of astounding, when you think about the amount of work, and the amount of people, and the amount of questions, and the types of questions, uh, that need to ask.
Here's the bathroom.
It felt like one of the other moments, to acknowledge it, because it's literally happening and kicking off next week, thank you.
Anybody else? I just want to, now that you said about bathrooms, I get to plug this one. If you haven't seen the movie that was done at Parnassus, The Storied Life of A.J. Fickery, it's a really good show, and it shows a lot of peaks of the town of Yama. Um, but the funny part is, they're coming out of the, um, ticket offices from Mantucket, they use the bathrooms on, on, uh, Ocean Street, so they, you know, you think they're coming out of the ticket office, they're coming out of the bathrooms, it's kind of. But I highly recommend, it's The Storied Life of A.J. Fickery, um, and, um, they did a really good job with it, so. Correspondents?
I send you guys what I got.
Write a simple story, we can read. Um, staff updates? Send them to us, we can read.
Um, as I mentioned before, the local comprehensive plan RFP is out, I think we have maybe twenty people have taken a look at it, but I would say maybe there's like eight firms seriously interested, or, like, and firms that I would say, okay, yeah, these are firms who are going to be potentially applying. Not received any questions yet, uh, but we have another week before questions we do.
Can I ask if, how the Riverwalk, does the Riverwalk Park, now that things have passed the town meeting, does, does all of a sudden the dam is broken and everybody starts running around?
Oh.
Okay, sorry, should I withdraw my question, Mr. Chairman?
No, it's a, very.
I think, given the momentum that.
With a huge step forward.
And all the hard work of the three people to the right side of this room, stage right, um, this might be worth a happy update.
No, it's, it's a good question, um, it's on to the next part, so continuing to get, first of all, thank you for the town for, um, stepping forward and agreeing to assist in funding this, um, but there's still some, what's the word I'm looking for, um, not regulations, um.
Permitting.
Permitting, thank you, that needs to be done, and, uh, then go up to RFP and hopefully break ground in the fall. Um, and it would probably take eighteen months to construct. Um, but there's a lot of things that still need to be done, you know, the, it's the little detail stuff that we do. It's like, you know, when you build a house, they call it a punch list that you've got to go back to, and so it's kind of a, you know, where do we want this, or how does this one look, how are we going to do about naming is a big issue right now.
And donations.
Donations. So, yeah, it's a, still a work in progress, but thank you for asking, and, uh, it's, it's, um, the closest we've ever been in, in thirty-five years. With, as they say in Rotary, with Polio, they say, in Rotary, they say in Polio, we're this close. Well, for the drive-in site, we're this close.
Does that mean that next summer, essentially, the summer twenty twenty-four, there won't be events there, there won't be anything there, except for the creation of a new thing?
There'll be construction.
Got it. There will be some events here this fall, this spring.
I know, the Tahrir Festival.
This summer, yes.
The Tahrir Festival will be there, first two weekends in June.
Nothing like we saw on, on our, our initial attempts, so.
Understood.
Thank you. So upcoming meetings, everybody mark your calendars, June sixth is a meeting with the board of selectmen on the draft accessory apartment amendments that we've just gone over. On the seventh, the very next day, we're going to have our first listening session, and it's going to be hybrid, so you're going to be able to do it online and in person.
So that's really the entire meeting, right, in terms of our agenda?
Yeah.
You know, there isn't, you're not anticipating any, okay, good, nor would you allow.
The second listening session will be an in-person meeting, and it's, we'll hold that one at the senior center on June fourteenth, and then we'll have a regular meeting on June twenty-first, and then we'll have our last, our, our third listening session. Um, it won't be our last, because we'll, as referred to up there, September, we'll have another discussion, but, uh, more of a hearing than a listening session, but a listening session in person, and that's going to be at Fire Station Two in Yarmouth Port, across the street from the Congregational Church. All of the meetings will be held at six P.M. And with the exception of our regular meeting, it could start.
Six P.M., that's, that's all we're doing.
What, so June seventh is also six P.M.?
Six P.M.
Aye, aye, aye. So all of these are six P.M.
Six P.M.
Thank you, good to know. Wow, this is so important, we're changing our own schedule.
I know.
Is Fire Station Two again?
Fire Station Two is across the street from the, uh, Congregational Church on the hill.
Six A.
On Route six A.
Not far from the Yarmouth Port Library, Susan.
Okay. Just pass it on the upside of the road, or just be forward on the upside of it.
To Strawberry Lane, or the Gory House, turn right.
Fence on your left.
Park in the back, do not park in the front, park in the back.
Handicap, you park in the front of the.
Right, if you're handicapped, you can park in the front.
The fire trucks.
That's right. Everyone in Yarmouth Port would appreciate it.
Anybody have anything else? Uh, I don't see any hands are up, when you're there, so we're good to go there. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, Susan?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I don't know if I had to say their last names or not, but I, although they are, I'm sure.
Aye.
So we're adjourned.